Call this meeting, James City County Board Supervise Regular Meeting Order on October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three at one P M. Miss Stevens, if you call the roll, please, sir.
Miss Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
All present.
I need a motion to amend the agenda to remove the first closed session item regarding the Williamsburg Regional Library and a motion to change the adjournment to a continuous of a meeting due to board members attending at the VACO Annual Conference.
So moved.
So move. Motion, roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, next I go on our presentations, VDOT Quarterly, Mr. Carroll.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hippel, other distinguished members of the board. Appreciate you having me here for the VDOT Quarterly Transstation Update. This quarter goes from July first to September thirtieth. In that timeframe, we have had six hundred excuse me, six hundred and fifty-five work orders. We've completed six, five hundred and sixty-eight of those for a eighty-seven or eighty-six percent completion rate. Couple highlights for the quarter, we've done a lot of D I and drainage repairs, ditching, some pothole, done some sweeping, roadway patching, and working, a lot of work out on Route sixty, and I'll get to that a little bit, between Anderson's Corner and New Kent County Line. We've issued the notice proceed for the final mowing and litter pickup for the county, October the thirtieth, and that'll be primary and secondary roads. That'll be the last one until next year's schedule starts. Current projects, we have ASAP project for Long Hill, well, I'm sorry, hits guard rail contract. The contractor has completed five hundred and eighty-three of five hundred and ninety-six identified hits within the county. Richmond Road Bike Path Sidewalk Improvements, that project is currently under construction with a fixed completion date of November thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have the latex modified seal, and I listed the routes out for that, but that project is complete. The notice, the fixed completion date was ten twenty-two, but we finished about a month early. We also have the P M five E plant make schedule, which is ongoing right now. They're over on Forge Riverside, Dyasken out that way. They will be doing that section of airport that's in the county, and then they'll also be doing Route sixty eastbound and westbound from like Lightfoot to the Williamsburg city limits, Jamestown, Williamsburg city limits. They've completed Old Town, Old Town paving, and they have completed one other section, but they're moving, their fixed completion date is November the twenty-second. So they have a lot of work to do between now and then, but they're pushing to get it done. Bridge replacement on Dyasken's Creek, that project is going really well. The temporary bridge was put up so the traffic could get around. The contractor is currently placing boarded slabs in the new bridge deck. The project is currently ahead of schedule, so I'm hoping by early next year, we'll be complete and done over there. Route sixty between Route thirty and New Kent Line, project scheduled to replace four cross drains and eleven drainage pipes, plan to get lined, and this is, I'll talk about this in a little bit, but this is pre-work, a contract for pre-work before a project next summer to actually pave both eastbound and westbound of sixty from Anderson's Corner to the New Kent Line. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail as we move along. And that project has been awarded. They should start in about three weeks, I think. We had a meeting out there today to review the pipes. Some of the completed jobs, Route one N nine ramp tree and brush removal, Route six fourteen sidewalk repair, Long Hill Road widening, Old Town Road turn lane, Skiff Creek Connector, the Towanna sidewalks, one ninety-nine East and West retaining wall project, and bridge repair, patching, waterproof and epoxy on Route on Monticello, one ninety-nine and thirty-one. Some upcoming projects, we have the Smart Scale Long Hill Road Shared Use Path. That has a advertisement for February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We just advertised last month the Croker Road Four-Lade Widening between the library and Route sixty, and bids are due on the twenty-fifth. And we have the Pocahontas Trail Reconstruction Phase One, and that is looking at February of two thousand and twenty-six to be advertised. Couple other things in the works, Jamestown Transfer Bridge Replacement. That has been awarded, but with some restriction, time restrictions, they haven't started that yet. We also have an H zip project on six twelve Long Hill that has been awarded. We also have full-depth reclamation project for Kingswood, which was advertised today, and that is a full-depth reclamation where they go in, take up the pavement, refurbish it, treat it, and then pave over top of it. And then the P M five E project for James City County, which is our paving, asphalt paving for next two thousand and twenty-four, goes to add next month, eleven nine. In your, in your, I'm not gonna go through them all, but in your packet, I have the routes, the proposed routes that are being the contract for next summer's paving. It's a fairly large list for James City County, about twice the amount of what we had this summer, so a lot of it is high, high-volume secondaries, high-volume primaries, but good to get them, get them paved. We do have the, I call it the Gap C Design Bill Project. At the back of your pages, there's a detail, but we had the public hearing on August twenty-fourth for that, and the schedule is, is listed. Next thing will be the request for proposals fall of two thousand and twenty-three. We also have the, this was the project that I was talking about, the Route six D concrete overlay, unbonded concrete overlay. So it's our, we're putting a project together for Route sixty from Anderson's Corner out to the New Kent Line. Part of that is concrete, part of it's asphalt in each direction, east and west. We have putting a project together to advertise first of the year for paving to start next summer to do a seven-inch unbonded concrete overlay for each direction of Route sixty, all four lanes. This will change the elevations, so will be some shoulder work, some drainage work, all that stuff is part of the project, and the maintenance of traffic is certainly part of that project as well, but it's good to, good to get that project finally pushed forward. F Y twenty-four County Safety Projects, we did the Old Town Road ADA Compliance Sidewalk Repairs, the New Town ADA Compliance Sidewalk Repairs. We did the Route one ninety-nine tree trimming and sign day lighting. I don't know if y'all have seen that, but we've opened up so you can see signs and all that stuff a lot better on one ninety-nine. And then Governor's Land D I and curb repairs. F Y twenty-four Plan, we're looking at the Route five, six fourteen, or either the Route thirty, seven forty-six, no left turn project, coupled with the secondary six-year plan. And then we have some work that's on our list for Fernbrook Pipe Repairs. There's a list of traffic studies in your packet, but I'm, I'm just gonna go over a couple that I think are, are important to address. A speed study on Route six fifteen, Ironbound Road, we will be reducing the speed limit from News Road to, I call it the Foxes, which is just past the plantation, you know, the, what is that called? The powtan plantation, so just past powtan plantation. Currently, it's at forty-five miles per hour, but with the increase of pedestrian traffic around Veterans Park, a lot of traffic in and out of that area, and the eighty-fifth percentile is actually reduced since the last time we did the speed study for Ironbound Road. We're reducing that from forty-five to forty miles an hour through that section. Another one I would like to bring, use right lane only on Route sixty, so we're putting up some signage out there on Route sixty as you're going to Busch Gardens, about through traffic, making sure that Busch Gardens traffic sticks to the right around McLaw Circle, all that area, so it doesn't bottleneck Route sixty through that area. And then the Route one ninety-nine and one thirty-two South Hensbury Street, we did the intersection safety study. There was an accident there involving a school bus that kind of triggered this. We, we came, our traffic engineers came up with a recommendation to, to put up some warning signs and also to put up some rumble, rumble strips out there. So the closest was Kingswood, Kings Point, Kings Point. So I, I talked to the HOA, I had them do a survey. So we're looking at other options versus a rumble strip out on one ninety-nine. The option that we were looking at was doing some flashing lights, intersection ahead type thing, but we don't have electricity in the area, and the area is not good. We've done the thirty-four solar, so we're still looking at that, but we are adding the flags to the eastbound advanced warning traffic signal head signs that are there. Just them are pretty straightforward. Land use update, since July first, we have done or completed twenty-three plan reviews in the county. We've issued fifty-five land use permits, and we have closed a hundred and fifteen, which is the first time that I've ever set up here and said we've closed more than we've issued. And that was because we held off from issuing any until we got some of these outstanding permits taken care of. There is a lot of utility work going on in the county, a lot of fiber work. So just, you know, just keep your eyes open when you're traveling, but there's a lot of work going on currently in James City. The, the last thing, I'll kind of go over the Gap project. It's nine miles of I sixty-four roadway widening and pavement rehabilitation. It does have two bridges that'll be widened and rehabbed. Paving the Lightfoot Parking Ride Lot is part of that as well. The overhead signage and I T S systems for that section are in part of the scope. We will have sound wall barriers, retaining walls, and storm drainage boughs, covers and pipes. And that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'd love to take them.
Please. Hi, Rossy. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. As I mentioned to you in the hall, it was requested by my grandchildren to please make sure that those shrubs coming out of the wisk going across Long Hill into Long Hill Gate are trimmed. But on the other side, I believe it's the county's responsibility, so.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Just want my grandkids and others to be able to see, get out of there.
And we want everybody to be safe.
There you go. And also, I, this is on Long Hill as well. Somebody mentioned to me that in the roundabout that the greenery was getting kind of high, and it was impairing visibility through there. So if you could just trim that down, appreciate it. That's it. Thanks.
I just wanted to send my thanks on behalf of the residents of the Meadows for the adjustment of the speed next to Veterans Park in that area there. I think it's definitely warranted, so.
Yeah, and, and there's been a lot of, it's been an uptick of vehicles in and out of that park.
Oh, yeah.
There's some, I guess, some leagues that go on there now, and, and I've noticed a lot, you know, plus the, plus the tourist traffic that goes through there as well. So hopefully it'll, it'll make it a little bit safer, and we have that, we have that mid-block, well, it's not really a mid-block, but we have that pedestrian crossings in that area as well, so hopefully it'll make it a little bit safer for everyone.
Thank you. And I'll start off with some thanks as well. Thanks for the work that was done at the intersection of Ron Springs Drive and, and McGruder in Grove, where there was some challenge in terms of visibility, line of sight at that, at that intersection. And thanks for doing everything you can to, to move along some of these projects and some repaving. Despite that very long list, the list of places that really need it is even longer, as you know, and it would be nice to be able to, to meet most of those needs in a, in a timely fashion, but I know that the fiscal realities of the situation are tough. I had a chance to chat with you before the meeting about a couple of intersections where folks have been concerned about the tripping of the lights and in particular Brookwood one ninety-nine and at Kings Point driving one ninety-nine. So both of those, I, I know you'll take a, a look at and see what, what can happen there. And I just also wanted to get a sense of the contract, whether the contract's been awarded that included the work at Goodrich Durfee in the vineyards where there was a problem with the.
So, so the pipe contract that I was referencing, yes, we just award, just awarded it. So I am using that pipe contract, it's for pipe replacement and pipe, pipe lining, which is what we're planning on doing at Goodwin Durfee. So next summer, let's start with this. That project I'm using on Route sixty to start that for the unbonded concrete overlay. The second thing I have on there is the pipe over there to get it replaced and lined. So it is awarded, it's just not the first thing that I'm doing with that thing. So the Route sixty work that I just alluded to, that is the first work that's being done on that contract. We just met with the contractor today.
And do you have a sense of, of when they may, might get to that?
So there are
It's been, it's been many years.
Complete replacements underneath the concrete or asphalt pavement, and then there are eleven crosspipes that we are lining. I'm hoping that takes two and a half months for them to get all of that complete. It'll probably be about three weeks before they start. You know, they have to, we've gone out and looked at those areas, they have to make sure they have all the materials in place for it. But after that, that is our next location. But yeah, we also, yeah, that, that answers.
And it will continue throughout the winter? It's not dependent on weather?
It's not.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's one good thing about that. It's not something that we have to wait for eighty-degree weather or something of that nature, like an asphalt or a patching type thing.
Well, thanks for everything you're doing, and we'll just keep on, keeping on about the other projects and hope that we can shake some additional money loose for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the help with the trimming from the, when you are going out onto Route five, and there, there was some trees planted for the Capital Trail beautification, I think, that we're growing and impending the sign, light of sign, line of sight, excuse me. So it sounds like Ms. Sadler and I are gonna have to duke it out over which intersection gets some help, if it's five and six Centerville or the intersection up by her?
Well, our, our, so we have both of them studied.
Right.
We know where there's a need at both of them. We want to move forward with both of them. It just comes down to funding. I don't have enough funding, looking at county safety and secondary six-year plan, one's gonna come before the other one. Unless, unless there's additional money, and then we can do all of it at the same time.
Okay.
But that's the plan.
All right.
For county safety, there's
She and I'll have to work that out, I guess.
There's other additional funding sources that may may push one of them, you know, up.
Okay. I did, and pardon my not remembering this, I, we had talked before about a possible crosswalk at Jamestown from Green Springs over to Jamestown High School. That, that is in the, that is something that is going to happen at some point. Right, I'm looking at all three.
So we did study it. There needs to be some, I think, the county is looking at putting some sidewalks to that location so we can put the crosswalk in that location.
Okay.
But currently, right now, there's no facilities, pedestrian facilities that puts people across there.
Okay.
I mean, once you cross Route five, you have, you're just sitting in the grass, there's nowhere to go.
Okay.
So we've applied for that funding. Per our previous discussions with the board, we hopefully should know January, February if we're awarded that funding from the state.
Okay. Yeah, it just, I, I want to mention it just because it really worries me. It's students, it's people that are trying to get over to the trail. I see them dart out, and it just, it just is really a great concern of mine, so I thought we had done something about trying to get, but I just wanted to get an update, so, all right.
We're waiting to hear.
Thank you. And then I, of course, appreciate everything VDOT does, but as you know, I have many drainage issues in the Berkeley District that, for one reason or another, cannot be fully addressed, and so I just feel like I need to continue to put a plug in for that as we move forward, that someday we might be able to get them addressed. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, just a couple things. The light right at Harris Teeter, just after on Harris Teeter and Route sixty, if you're coming out of Harris Teeter, it's, it's very quick, and it backs up into the roundabout, and so it doesn't give enough time to get enough vehicles out on the sixty before it starts backing up in the roundabout, and then that locks that entire area up. If you could look at maybe lengthening that.
We'll look, we'll look at, I mean.
The tree trimming work down from Forge Road down to Haven, thank you for that. Got a lot of good reports on that, and looks really good and gets everything out of the way there. And then the, as you and I talked before the meeting, the little bump as we come out of New Kent into James City County, but that'll be addressed once we put that.
It will, but I'll look at that before that. I mean, because it'll be next summer before that project's kicking off.
Okay. And and, you know, that, that's gonna be a good project for the entire region because that road floods. You wouldn't think that road floods that much, but there'd be standing water all the way across that road in a good rainstorm, and so lifting it seven inches will definitely.
And getting the grades, right.
And getting those ditches where they need to be, it'll, it'll be a blessing for everybody up there. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move into the consent calendar. Today's consent calendar consists of adoption of the James City County Emergency Operating Plan two thousand and twenty-three, contract award annual building envelope technical support service, contract award for one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety court support building roof replacement, contract award one hundred and one hundred thousand nine hundred and ten James City County Fire Station number two roof replacement, dedication of streets in Section Five of the Forest Glen subdivision, establishment of new positions, grant award of twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-six fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, grant award for seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four for Forest subsidy fund, leave payout, minutes adoption, and the two thousand and twenty-three scattered site community development block grant. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull, or may I have a motion?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Lucy and Karen.
All right, board discussions, fiscal update 2023, year end and 2024 per quarter. Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Holland. I'm the budget manager for the county. And today I'll provide updates on the county's finances for FY '23, which ended June 30th, as well as the first quarter of FY '24, which ended on September 30th. This presentation will only focus on the general fund, so we won't be going over CIP, ARPA, or other grant-related funds, which exist outside of the, the county's normal operating activities. To start off with, we'll take a look at county's general fund revenues for FY '23. Please, if it moves forward, there we go. Please note, these figures are still considered preliminary until we complete our FY '23 financial statement audit in the next few months. Here we presented budget and actuals for FY '23, as well as a comparison to FY ' '22 actual revenue. General property taxes is our largest revenue source, representing two-thirds of total revenue. This category includes real estate and personal property taxes, and most of the increase here was because FY '23 was a reassessment year. Other local taxes include sales, meals, and lodging taxes, as well as business license. This category, as well as license permits and fees, experienced slight increases for FY ' '23. The decrease in use of money and property related to the sale of property where the county was a landlord during FY '22, so we were no longer collecting that revenue in FY '23. The increase in state and federal revenue primarily was due to increase in state funding to assist with law enforcement, recruitment, and retention efforts. And the increase in charges for services was primarily due to increased use of Parks and Rec programs and facilities. The miscellaneous line item includes property sales that took place during each fiscal year, and those amounts were based on the, the various properties sold. Lastly, on that fund balance line, you can see that the county used 14.4 million of fund balance during FY '23, and this was for various purposes, including support of the FY '23 CIP and other one-time expenditures. Use of fund balance during FY '22 was for similar initiatives, but we also used fund balance for the purchase of the Courthouse Green properties for $7 million. Because fund balance is not a recurring funding source, we provided a year-over-year comparison in red at the bottom of the screen. That way you can see the overall growth in our recurring revenues of 15.2 million, or roughly 6.9%.
Can I just stop on, on this one? Do you have a, just a general estimate for us today? I know you, you might not have it right off the top of your head, of the amount of the increase in the property tax that was from new construction and the like versus reassessment of existing properties?
I would have to pull that. I know we have those numbers, but I don't, I don't have them with me.
If you would, might send that at some point.
Absolutely.
And, and in addition, if we could get some information about the amount of the personal property tax, since we did take action this year on that front?
Yes, and personal property tax, I'll note, has a calendar year impact. So part of fiscal year '23 reflected that, that tax reduction, but the second half of FY '23 was, was back to the 100% assessment there. I'll pull those numbers.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Turning to the expenditure side, and again, based on preliminary unaudited figures, you can see that all departments finished the year under budget. On this slide, please note the actual column reflects both expenditures incurred, as well as purchase orders that were outstanding as of the end of the year. There were roughly 1.9 million of POs at the end of FY '23, and those will carry forward into FY '24 so that the planned purchases can take place. Savings resulted in part due to vacancies during FY '23, as well as purchases that were not made, either due to supply chain issues or changing needs in departments. The surplus in the school division line reflects the school's year-end savings for FY '23, of which the county's proportionate share was $8.7 million. Usually we would bring a resolution to the board at this time of year with the school's request on how to use that year-end surplus, but we are operating under a new agreement as of this year. And as part of that agreement, the county will retain 10% of the year-end savings, and the remaining 90% will be committed back to the schools. We'll talk about more, we'll talk more about this on the next slide. Additional savings in the school division and transfers to other fund line items related to some debt service savings. This slide provides a quick recap of our preliminary FY '23 numbers. Our FY '22 ending unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance was $65 million, and we used roughly 1.5 million of that during FY '23. Based on FY '23 results so far, we will have a surplus in the general fund of roughly $36 million. However, some of that amount is already committed to specific purposes, as you can see on this slide. 3.4 million will go to debt service needs, and 6.6 million will go towards upcoming CIP projects. Of that 8.7 million of school surplus from FY '23, 7.8 million, or 90%, will go back to the schools, per that new agreement we discussed. That leaves roughly 18.3 million. That will increase our county unassigned fund balance number. Our fiscal policies require that we maintain an unassigned fund balance of 15% of our general governmental expenditures. Prior to FY '23, that percentage was 12%. And that higher percentage means a higher dollar limit requirement. At the end of FY '23, that fiscal policy would require roughly 42 million of unassigned fund balance to meet the 15% threshold. But based on the figures shown here, our balance will be roughly 81.7 million, or approximately 29%. So a very healthy reserve. Over the last few years, we've utilized fund balance for one-time expenditures, including using fund balance for CIP. We've avoided using fund balance for operational needs because those types of expenditures would be ongoing without an ongoing funding source, creating a budgetary imbalance. In recent years, due to inflation and economic uncertainties, we've budgeted conservatively, and we've looked to find savings. And we've been fortunate to have positive year-end results. Going forward, we need to continue to be strategic on how we use fund balance to help us maintain our strong financial position and help fund future significant expenditures. Now, are there any questions on FY '23?
So, could you just get us a total that, that, of what we've gonna have given the schools? Would you be able to do, just send that out?
Yes, I can send that out.
Okay. And then, probably a question for them, but if somebody could let me know, did they give a 7% increase? I've gotten a question on whether, on if they're going to see another, now that the state has come through with their budget, or they, or have they just given a 7%? If somebody could just let me know that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson, I believe they did, but we will verify that for you.
I think so, but thank you.
And the designation of the, of the money that was returned to the schools, is the purpose, is that its capital?
Yeah.
Per the new agreement, we're going to be using that as, as part of building FY ' '25's budget. And so it will be, we'll discuss at that time whether or not it's going to go to capital or operating needs.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving on to the first quarter of FY '24. Presented here are the annual budget and first three months of actual revenue for July through September of FY '24 compared to actuals for the same time period of FY ' '23. We're early in the fiscal year, so we haven't reached our main real estate or personal property tax due dates. And some of the revenue we received during those first three months actually relate to the prior year, so we've had to accrue those numbers back to FY '23. This year-over-year information reflects those accrual adjustments for both years so that the numbers are comparable. Some of the differences shown here relate to timing. For example, we received one type of state payment for roughly $400,000 in the first quarter of FY '23, but we didn't receive those, that same type of funds until October of this year. Other differences relate to one-time revenue. We sold a property during the first quarter of FY '23 for 1.3 million, and you can see that causing a difference in the miscellaneous line item. Lastly, on the fund balance line, you can see the county has used 10.6 million of fund balance in FY '24. That went towards support of FY '24 CIP, as well as outstanding purchase orders from FY '23. Use of fund balance in FY '23 was for similar initiatives during the first quarter. The year-over-year change in quarter one, excluding fund balance, again, is shown in red at the bottom of the screen, and the difference primarily relates to that one-time sale of property in the miscellaneous line item. Switching gears to the expenditure side, this slide shows budget and actuals for the first quarter of FY '24. Please note, actuals includes both expenditures incurred, as well as encumbrances. If all expenses came in evenly, you would expect to see about 25% of the budget used at this point in time. Overall, though, we're at 30%, with that last category of contributions and transfers skewing the overall percentage. We'll talk about specific departments next. This line graph reflects department spending in the blue line, as well as a 25% benchmark in the green line. For those areas tracking above 25%, it's important to note that not all expenses are incurred evenly during the course of the fiscal year. For example, in financial administration, we pay our annual insurance premiums upfront at the start of the year. In addition, our annual audit occurs in the fall, so we are incurring those expenses early in the year. In IT, most of our equipment maintenance and software contracts require payment in full at the start of the year, and that's why you'll see that department at 39% right now. Also, for Parks and Rec, their operations are seasonal, so they do incur a number of expenditures in the warmer months, so early on during the fiscal year. And that's, that's why you'll see they are at 29%. Contributions and transfers, that category includes support to outside agencies, most of which receive their funding at the start of the year. This also includes our transfers to other funds, most of which we do in July. So again, that's why you see that, that particular item at 55%. Also, I'll note, again, these numbers included encumbrances. And having those encumbrances means that it can cause a higher trend here in this first quarter of the year, because most of our purchase orders are issued at the beginning of the fiscal year. And, and they impact the budget at that time. Now, these timing differences are normal and generally work themselves out during the course of the fiscal year. FMS will continue to monitor the county's budget, and will work with departments on any areas that need to be addressed. That concludes my remarks on FY '23 and the first quarter of FY '24. Happy to respond to any questions.
Questions?
I just had a quick question. So, I mean, I think that's pretty good. I mean, 25, 29, but, you know, great, excellent, great presentation, by the way. Thank you. But I'm curious, how, what does the conversation look like with, between you and, say, Grace Boone? Do you deal with Grace, or do you deal with someone in her office, and you say, hey, this is where you're going? Watch it, or, or what's your typical conversation like with somebody when it comes to their expenditures?
That's a, that's a great question. I, I know I work often with Grace or, or her leadership team. It depends on the particular division and what sort of expenditures we're seeing and what areas may need to be addressed, and, and whether funding maybe needs to shift from one line item to another. Sometimes it's not the overall division that needs to address something, but maybe they need to look at, at their spending in particular line items. And also, we can help them plan for the next year. If they are seeing this as a recurring expenditure, how can we address it going forward?
So one thing that's come out of this, I guess, is the, the, we're in a healthy situation, so we were able to do those positions that had been requested that we had not been able to fund, that we just funded on our consent agenda that were much needed.
Yes, Ms. Larson, a couple of things. All of those positions were requested in the budget process. We had had them in your budget messages not being recommended for funding. They totaled not just under $2 million in terms of implementing, and that was some one-time startup costs and other things related to those. So this year, we are, in this year, trending well, but the bigger piece is we had set aside an additional $2 million for schools. In our budget, we approved close to 4 million for schools. We set aside another two because the state hadn't adopted their budget, and the state's adopted budget does provide additional funding to the school division, and so it freed up that $2 million to go towards these recurring. Because it's not just this year trending well. As Cheryl had mentioned, it is recurring expense on and on with, with full-time positions.
Right. And just to say in public what I said to you, I, I, I think that those positions are needed. I don't take an issue with that. I do worry because we do lose people due to compensation. I know we're looking at doing a, but I am just a big believer in if you're going to do a compensation study, you can't stick it on a shelf, because then you're just doing another compensation study in another five years, and you've done nothing for the compensation study that you did five years prior. And so we know that compensation is an issue and getting to be more, more of an issue nationwide. So, but I do appreciate that you were able to do those positions, so.
And I will tell you, our department's just a, you know, they wanted to fill the vacancies, they want to retain our staff, and then this was really third priority. So it was the opportunity to bring it back to request, because we are very aware of that ongoing cost and the need for compensation to, to match the surrounding localities and make sure we can retain and recruit folks like we have to serve the community in the future. So that, I think you'll have a lot of conversation with us about the compensation study in the January timeframe.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And we even talked about that in the mayors and chairs and across the region of, you know, what's going on and what's driving some of this and trying to keep up. And every time one that's lagging behind comes up, the others push theirs up. And so it's a, it's a battle right now as far as, you know, and we're, we're trending real well, but we also got to realize that, you know, with this school issue and all that, we may have a school to build and a county complex and all that. And I know a lot of people will look at it and go, well, maybe we can, you know, do a rebate on taxes or that sort of thing. Well, just because we're, we're doing well, and we've got all these other projects we hadn't anticipated that are coming up, or we had anticipated that are now costing more than what they should cost. So I think we hold our course and, and stay where we're at, I think will, will, in the long run, serve us better as far as being able to pay our employees more, or our employees more, being able to get everyone we need on, on deck, also be able to take care of the project we have, and protect our triple, triple bond rating. And that's really very important for our borrowing as we move forward. So, thank you for the great presentation.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, that I think the, an important point to underline is the fact that a lot of the savings that we experienced last year were due to vacant positions. And we have asked an awful lot of our current employees to pick up for folks who are not in those positions now. And so in the future, those will be ongoing costs when we're back to fully staffing. So this is, this is sort of an opportunity to bank some of, of those resources in order to be prepared for what we need to deal with later on. But we ought to recognize that those budgets were built around staffing at, at a level that was necessary for the provision of services.
And I, and I think too, talking to some of our senior staff members, just going around and asking, you know, what's, what's going on? What are you, what are you seeing? And, and they're, they're training people like they've always done, but it used to be they stayed longer. Now they're getting a nickel somewhere else and they're leaving. So it's, it's making our senior staff members go, just got that one trained to where I need it. Now they moved over to here, or left, I've got to train another one. So there's a burnout there as well. And I think that comes with what we're paying and what we may have to look at as far as this study. We may have to come up even more in order to make sure that we're retaining these employees that are in that middle ground, because our senior staff is, we're wearing them down a little bit, having to ask them to do more training, more people training, you know, while they're also trying to do their job. So that's not a good scenario for our teams. Just my two cents.
We'll follow up with those questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll do, go into tax exemption requirements. Richard, welcome, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Hippel, other members of the board, happy to be here to talk about something that works. Our real estate exemption program for elderly and disabled citizens. It is designed to assist those with limited incomes to remain in their homes without having to be overburdened by real estate taxes. That's the nature of the program. And we hope that we have assisted at least a few.
That's the nature of the program, and we hope that we have assisted at least a few. I believe in your packet, you have, you had a historical record of what we've done for the past, oh, 24 years, and you can see how the exemptions qualifications and amounts have, oh, I'm sorry, did you not get it?
I don't think, I didn't have an attachment.
Ms. Larson, I believe we emailed it to you Friday versus attaching it to the agenda, so my fault in not having it there.
That's okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
But it shows the evolution of our program. From the year 2000, when the limit on income was at $22,500 for a, for a household, assets other than their home were limited to $75,000, and the exemption amount was on the first $65,000 of value. Currently, our income level for household income is $45,000. Assets, not including the home itself, at $200,000, and the benefit is an exemption on the first $120,000 of value. We have always pegged our exemption on the value rather than a set dollar amount. The reason for, for us doing that became evident in two, between 2015 and 2016. We had no, no changes in the value of the exemption from a real estate value, but the rate, our property tax rate went up from 77 cents to 84 cents, which meant that our citizens did not lose any benefit for that $120,000 of value. And in fact, their exemption amount went up from $924 a year to $1,004, it's $1,008 per year, because it kept track with the rate. If you compare ours, our, our program with surrounding jurisdictions, we stack up very well. Hampton has only a deferral or a freeze for their citizens. Newport News, for a full exemption, your income is limited to $25,000 for a household. New Kent has a limit of $50,000 for their, for their income, but they also limit the, the amount of the exemption as well. City Williamsburg is deferral only. There is no exemption. York County has a tiered system where, based on your household income, you may get a larger or smaller benefit. Ours, if you qualify, you know what your benefit's going to be. So that's where we stand at this point. We have, again, but it, as with all things, incomes are going up, values of houses are going up. It's about time we made an adjustment. I'm here today to recommend that you make adjustments, both to the income requirement and to the benefit level. Whereas right now, our income, maximum income to receive this exemption is at $45,000 per household income, I'm going to recommend that that be raised to 55. I'm also going to suggest that you raise the actual benefit from the first $120,000 of value to the first $150,000 of value. That is going to raise the exemption amount from a dollar standpoint, from the current 996, which is $120,000 of value, at 83 cents per hundred, to approximately 1,245, $150,000 at 83 cents per hundred. This would not take effect until fiscal year 2025. We are currently, again, because we are in the middle of it, of the tax year, we cannot change it until, until the next, next year. But that, you know, that is, that is my recommendation as Commissioner of the Revenue. I think that, based on the increased revenues, incomes that people have had, as well as the increased value that we have on our assessments, that that's probably an appropriate way of movement at this point. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
So, first of all, thank you. Actually, this had been brought to my attention by a senior citizen in my neighborhood who, due to workforce issues, had to work an increasing amount, because there was no one to work, and they went $80 over and lost their exemption. And so, which was quite, it was, it was quite upsetting, because they, while they, yes, they worked increased time, they still made minimum wage, which has been raised a little bit, but still, there, there was an income issue. So, so, but I don't want to take away that when you do something like this, much like other things that we do, it does fall on others to, that, you know, because we'll all be paying our regular tax, and so I don't want to take away from that. But I do think that as you age, if you want to be able to age in your home, if you want to be able to continue to, I, I think that helping someone is not a bad idea at all. So I would agree with the, the 150, which does raise it just, just a, just a smidge, so, in the 55,000, but I don't know how other board members feel, so, but I just thought I'd.
I'd say, you know, certainly would like to, to consider this. We haven't changed the amounts in a, in a while, and obviously there have been significant changes in cost of living and the like. I guess I'm curious as to what the cumulative impact of this will be. Do we have any sense of how many people would be affected and what the, what the additional cost might be?
It's, it's very hard to, to do, to come up with that. Again, it raises the, as, as I was saying, it raises the benefit from approximately $1,000 to approximately $1,250 per qualifying applicant. Unfortunately, we really don't know how many people are going to apply in the future. We had 406 this year. I would imagine that there would be an increase. It would probably be up to, you know, 500 or so qualifying with the increase in the, in the income, income level. That would be fairly typical, but it's just a guess, and, you know, it's one of those things, you, you can put applications out there, you can promote them, but if they don't apply, they don't apply, and I hope everybody who qualifies applies.
Is there any way to get, would there be any way for us to, to take a look at, just maybe take a look at the real estate and try to get a, a figure, maybe move this to our November? Would that still work for the, for the budgetary work?
I believe the Commissioner of Revenue is, is timed to get his forms changed and applications out early in the year, so November, I think, would work.
November would be fine. As far as, as far as passing a resolution on this. We have to get those applications printed to be available, to be mailed out, when people are getting their income statements. Unfortunately, people will get their W-2s and their 1099s and put them aside, and oftentimes they get lost by, by the time the application is due in June. So we try to get them and encourage people to file early.
Okay. Maybe we could do that, so we'd have some idea?
Yeah, I think it's, the, the recommendation is very worthwhile. I think we just want to have a sense of what the, what the range of, of impact might be, so, you know, we, we know that.
This year, this year, with 400 applicants, or 400, the impact is approximately $400,000. If we got 500, if we had 500, we would be looking at approximately $500,000, with an increase in the exemption amount from 120 to 150, well, we would be probably looking at less than $600,000. It'd be a 20% increase, which would put it right at 600. Now, if you want to have a compare, something to compare that to, if you, those of you who have, and Ms. Larson, I'm going to give you my copy here, the disabled veterans this year, on our sheet, when I printed this, this, this chart, we had 915 disabled veterans qualifying for a real estate exemption. It's $3.2 million of real estate tax. Since then, we've added another 12, and we have another five or six that have not been processed yet. So in comparison, $600,000 for real estate exemption for our elderly and disabled citizens pales by comparison.
Thank you.
The other, the other question I had was noticing that the, the total assets, you, you didn't recommend an increase of that from 200,000. Is that because our, our surrounding jurisdictions seem to have about that as well, most of them?
And either that or in some cases, lower.
Okay.
Saying New Kent has, has a higher, currently has a higher income but a lower asset. Their, their assets are leveled at $150,000.
Okay, you have, maybe if, I guess I would make a motion to table until you come back with, and then to our November meeting?
I think with your direction, we can do it either way. We'll bring it back. If you want to direct us to do that in a motion, we would do it, but we weren't asking for action today. It really was meant to be a discussion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, that's fine. It's a board discussion. Great. You can come back? That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think the, the main point is that, that we'd just like to get a sense of whether the board is supportive of the idea. I'd certainly support this.
I should?
I would, too. Yeah.
Good, good, good. Bring it forward.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Board considerations, 2024 legislative agenda. Adam.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's hard to believe, but it's time to talk about our 2024 legislative agenda already. I provided you with a memo this year, a little bit different than usual. Sometimes I just slide the whole thing over to you, and we talk. Thought I'd prime the pump a little bit this year and remind you of what you've talked about throughout the past year, as you guys are talking and mentioning things. I put it in a folder and bring it all to you at the end of the year. So the, the ones that we talked about, or that individually you guys talked about last year, first one was adopt a resolution supporting NACO's position on regulating telecommunications facilities. That was Mr. McGlinnan. I've heard this actually from a couple of you, I ascribed it to Ms. Larson, but deregulate low-hazard dams like Kings Point and Jolly Pond. Encourage and provide for, regulate the electric vehicle charging infrastructure. That was Mr. McGlinnan. Increase the distance of the 40-foot no-contact voting center rule. That was originally brought up by Mr. Eisenhower, but I've heard that a few times, given the, the issues that we've had at the vote center this year. Also, relax development standards for agritourism. That was Ms. Larson. I noted that Deputy County Attorney Liz Parman has recommended a change in the Virginia Code section that requires a five-year notice period for trash takeover, as we are considering doing that. Really, I, I think that's a pretty old provision that was meant to protect local trash haulers back in the day when there was a lot of local trash haulers, but I think environmental regulations have mostly regulated them out of business. The, the major trash haulers in the county are all from, out of state and even from out of country. Not all of them, but the, the vast majority. And then lastly, what's not on your list, I did want to mention to you that I've spoken with Judge Smith. The judges of the Ninth District Circuit have gotten together and they talked to the judicial council, presented the judicial council with the numbers of caseload that they have, and have convinced the judicial council to recommend that they add another circuit court judge to our district, which would be funded for by the General Assembly. That recommendation goes to the General Assembly, and I would recommend that we put that on our legislative agenda to support that effort. They really need another judge, and to have the General Assembly pay for it would be awesome.
I agree.
Other than what you guys have, have said over the past year, I included your 2023 legislative program, which was a break from the norm in that we did it in one page. It also didn't really ask for any direct legislation. It was mostly a positional paper. If you go through it, as I mentioned in the memo, most of this is still relevant. I, I would like to know whether you guys want to keep a couple of the things on there, in particular, the school funding. We had that one in there that said, change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities. If you guys want to keep that, that's fine. I'm just thinking of space. If we want to keep to one page, and how much of yours we add, how small do I get the font?
Well, yeah, I, I think the, the question of whether we're going, likely to have an impact on the question of redoing the, the local composite index formula and so forth is pretty, pretty limited. It's more likely to come as part of the VACO or VML, VML packages than just being in our package alone, and it would already be covered by the adoption of those agendas. What we might want to do, though, is just maybe reemphasize the, the desire to fully remove the cap on support positions that are justified by SOQ. We did benefit significantly this year. Well, I won't say benefit. We, we got a restoration of the monies that had been eliminated back during the Great Recession, at least partially, and if we could continue to get that assistance, it would be a good step in the direction of the state taking on its, its responsibilities.
Duly noted, sir.
I think just, one thing we need to pay attention to is the 45-day early voting. I'd be curious after it's over, the cost to the locality, but one thing I've found interesting is that the number of days increased, but I believe in talking to the registrar, they're, the training, like, they didn't fix the training. So she had to, she's having to train people that she's already trained for the same election within the 45-day, because of the, the timing of the general. So just something, you know, that unintended consequence, perhaps, that wasn't paid attention to by the General Assembly. So I, I'm not necessarily saying that you need to put that in the legislative agenda. I'm just saying, we probably need to be paying a little bit more attention when, when these, those type of things, if they say they're going to keep the 45-day, if they go to change, if, God forbid, they make it 55 days, you know, just, just something to put in your tickler file that, you know, we need to be kind of zoning in on about early voting.
Well, and as, as you know, we're interviewing potential lobbyists for next year, and so that's something that we can probably help keep a little closer watch on than, than what I'm able to do.
Yeah, so I'll be interested at VACO to get, in, to seeing how, how it's been going with other localities, too, but I, I mean, they have the same qual, regulations that we do, but anyway, so.
I'd like to, to bring up one, we talk about the, the 40-foot no-contact rule, and it's basically, it's based upon an arc from the entrance, and the way with the new building, they're having to do it is to draw it from around any potential entrance, entrance to the door. Well, there are some places where technically you could walk right up to the side of the building or whatever. I'm not so sure that it should be significantly increased from 40, maybe to 50 feet or whatever, but I would say to make it around the building itself, as opposed to around from an entrance. That way, you've got the, the whole building, regardless of which entrance you're going into, covered. The reason I mention this is because I went over, and it was of a great concern to Diana, because she's talking about back, the back part of her new early voting room, having to put in
new early voting room, having to put in another door in order to be able to have that forty foot. So people can't come right up to the windows where people inside are, are voting. And I, I hadn't thought about it until I talked to, to our voter registrar. So I'm, I, I think maybe forty or fifty feet, but instead of, instead of, I would focus more on the, the building envelope itself to basically protect the integrity of the whole building.
Other item that I don't think we would be able to really accommodate much on in terms of our legislative package, but we might be thinking ahead on this is just whether we want to ask the state to consider some kind of regulation related to the use of herbicides or pesticides in the vicinity of the Chesapeake and its tributaries. I think that's something that, that again is more likely to have legs if it's something that's part of the broader consideration by the local government lobbying groups and, and maybe we can talk with them about adding that to the next legislative package beyond this year's.
Any of y'all want to take off? Back to where we were years ago and, and have a pile of them and no one take anything.
I don't think anybody will take anything anyway.
That's what I'm worried about, definitely. I know definitely we ought to.
I, I think, I think that, you know, we had sort of focused on this before. I, I don't, I don't see, see that there's any harm in, in articulating some of the things as a county like VACO does that we support. We'd like to see them do, but we're not necessarily going to be able to get an individual sponsor from our local level. What I'm more concerned is that there are particular items that are more of an indirect impact for us that we would like to have some sort of legislation carried by our local legislators to be more of an action. And, you know, this is where we'd like action. The rest of this, we support. And I don't mind if it runs, you know, front page and then, and then the back page. And, and the positions that we support, I think can be fairly well abbreviated. They don't have to have a long detailed discussion necessarily of, of the positions and, and, and a lot of them, if you want to look at the VACO agenda, we can say we support the VACO agenda. Boom, that covers a lot of it. So we can keep, we can keep the paper fairly, fairly slim, I think.
Yeah, for me, like seeing something, and I do not mean this, but it is political right now. The grocery tax is getting a lot of TV time. But I think by having something on, it's like, that's fine if you support, but please understand that supports things at the local level. And so we will either have to cut those things or we will have to do something here. Here, you can't just take away money without finding money to replace it. So for me, you know, you keep something on, I mean, frankly, number six, I would just change it to the county request, the general assembly reject any attempt to usurp local zoning control. Boom, period. Not even putting it on to short-term rentals. But, but, you know, I think it's important to keep things so that people know that these are the type of things that impact them locally. So appreciate your work.
I will probably contact, those of you that have names on here, I'll probably contact you directly so we can flesh this out a little bit more before I bring you the, the proposed agenda. And we'll do that at your next work session meeting. I had also emailed you guys in sort of exactly what we did last year, not bringing the legislators in for the meeting in the work session room and then instead relying upon both staff and, and the board to get the message out to legislators. Are we gonna, are we good with that, continuing with that?
I am good with that. I know that we have heard from one legislator that is running, a, a future legislator that's running unopposed. I do think if, if we do see some changes that we do somehow do a personal reach out. You know, to say, hey, James City County, you know, these are some things. I think losing Senator Normant, somebody that's very familiar, served on this body, very familiar with what's going on in James City County. You know, that is obviously going to be a loss. So somehow we have to make ourselves known to future General Assembly members as the election pans itself out.
Would that be like a, maybe a March work session? That we invite them in after the elections and depends on.
Well, their schedule.
Their schedule.
Yeah, but at some point we need to make them familiar with our.
That may be April, May.
Yep, after their April deadlines crossover and all that.
Well, I'll get you a draft for consideration at your next meeting, next month's work session meeting.
Okay, because we had a, we were looking at possible motion on this one today, but we're gonna.
No, no need for a motion. It's just giving, help, giving me direction to bring something.
All right, so we'll hold this off to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move into utility solar, utility scale solar farm applications. Cause I, welcome, sir. How you doing today?
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting, the Berkeley Group presented to the Board of Supervisors the draft solar policy language for large-scale solar facilities and a draft ordinance template that addresses various, various scales of solar facilities. Since then, staff has prepared executive summaries of the draft policy and ordinance template to aid the board's review. And those are attachments number four and number five to your board package. Purpose of, the purpose of today's meeting is to present to the Board of Supervisors the revised language of the draft solar policy and ordinance template based on feedback from members of the Board of Supervisors. Staff looks forward to the board, to the board's feedback. Based upon these materials and further direction at the meeting, staff will prepare the policy and ordinance for the Planning Commission's direct review at a public hearing in early two thousand twenty-four. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Questions?
No, not a question so much as a compliment. This is much more readable. I, I, I read it. I understand it. And I, that, I think that, that helped focus the discussion a little bit. I think we, we, you know, we'll go, if we're, the understanding, this will go back to, through the Planning Commission, the full process, the vetting process. The public will have a chance to comment and it'll come back to us. So we'll have plenty of opportunity to take public input and, and to look at any tweaks that may need to be made. But I think this is a good, good, good starting point.
Thank you for the work and look forward to.
You're welcome.
Working through it.
Motion to move forward?
Press on.
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we'll move into designation of voting represented for the VACO annual business meeting. Mr. Stevens, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, hope it's short and sweet, so to say. There are four of you that are planning to attend the VACO conference. We did generally send the voting delegate information for one. And I don't know if you would like to volunteer someone or select someone from the four that might be in attendance that we could send that to VACO. Their business meeting is Tuesday. I think it's at ten o'clock in the morning. I didn't know if we might have somebody interested in that.
I think we, I think we already have somebody who's going to be there.
Sure, I'll do it. Yeah, I'll do it.
I move to Ms. Larson.
I'm usually the only one still there for the business meeting, so yes.
All right, everybody good? Do we need a motion? Do you have a motion?
I just made a motion.
Motion on the floor?
Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we'll go into board requests and directives. Anyone have anything that they want to go over today or we want to move on to county administrator report?
I, I, I would just mention since it's, we don't have the service authority here that we had a service authority recognition. And I think most of us were there at one time or another. But I was very impressed with the turnout and, and camaraderie and, and the the sense of family, if you will, that our employees and service authority had. And I'm very, very impressed with that group of people. They do wonderful work on behalf of our citizens.
And, and I, I just mentioned that Mr. Hippel and I were right before that ceremony at, out at Kelray Farm to hear more about the grant that was received, they are part of, to provide assistance to food hubs that are reaching people who have food needs. And it was very interesting and impressive presentation that folks at Kelray put on for us.
Got to ride the wagon.
Yes, we did.
Very, just a couple of things very quickly. Mr. Stevens, do we have anybody in, like a police officer? I know, probably don't right now, just because of trying to get officers on the street. Didn't know if we had an officer that was one that was some, had a recruitment position, just hearing about more and more departments that are doing that, that are using current police officers as, sending them to different schools and that kind of thing to recruit potential officers.
Ms. Larson, I believe the short answer is yes. We've had an officer where that's been an assigned duty to them. So that's not their primary duty, but they do recruiting. And then we do take officers with us to job fairs and other activities. We have recently put a position in to be an HR person within the department to further help with our recruiting efforts. And that person is sort of coordinate and ensure that officers are available to go and be at those other job fairs. So we have at least a hybrid of what some others are doing. And we have put many of the HR type staff in a lot of our departments to focus on each department, whether that's general services or fire or police to try to help in our recruitment efforts and make sure somebody, that is their job to be focused upon. So I'll get a little better description of that for you, but the short answer is we are doing some of that.
Okay, and then we, we talked about this intersection before, the intersection at Five and Centerville. And it is a no left turn, but it is constantly, you know, people are getting more and more comfortable. Because it's been a while. We don't have any pork chop there. Doesn't sound, it sounds like I'm going to have to wrestle Ms. Sadler to see if we can, which one of us is going to get the more concrete there in a couple of years. I have had the question, and it's very difficult to have a police officer out there because there is no shoulder. They are down at, they have to wait down the street somewhere, undisclosed location. I have had the question asked if you can do something like a red light camera there where if there was a turn and somebody, so I don't know, I'm, I'm asking. So if somebody could just let me know at some point, that would be great. And just a couple of things. One, I attended the Lafayette High School fiftieth anniversary celebration, the Planning Committee. I just, they need to be commended because they did an excellent job. They did a Thursday social. I should, I had a Lafayette nineteen eighty grad in my house who went kicking and screaming. And I sent a picture to our children of him and it was my, your dad having a terrible time as he was talking to like thirty people. They did a social at Proffy Moon, which was really well attended. Then the game between Tab and Lafayette, I imagine Lafayette, it's been a long time since I've, I've gotten to go to a Lafayette home football game. But it was packed and, and I'm sure, and it was just so many people from, from different classes. And then on Saturday night, they did a banquet and they also included their twenty-two, twenty-three, excuse me, Hall of Fame, which was twenty-two people into their Hall of Fame, which was incredible. And something that I wrote on my county page that I just want to reiterate here as well were in all of the speeches, the impact of the teachers and the coaches that have had on these young people was just incredible. And as I stepped off of the school board eight years ago, one thing that was beginning to change were the code, the teachers that were coaching. And part of that was the, probably a lot of it was the increased testing and benchmarking and everything that they had to take on. So they just were not able to, to do the increased coaching time. And we're losing out by doing that. We really are because the impact on the, the human beings that these twenty-two people have turned into was tremendous. And I'm sure that was parents and coworkers and, and all kinds of people. But what was continuously mentioned throughout their speeches were the impact that those coaches and teachers had had on them. And we just need to be really cognizant of that as we move forward. And I, I, I hope the state will look at that, that there is so much more to some, some student than a, than a test score. And I hope we can get back to the impact that we've seen there at some point. And then just on a personal note, I just want to end and, and send my sympathies to my aunt, Diane Thompson. My Uncle John passed away last week. His funeral was yesterday. And there's not many people in James City County that can say that they passed away within an eighth of a mile or in their backyard of where they were born. He was born on Centerville Road at his parents' home and he died at the home that he and my aunt built on Centerville Road. And he was a lifelong James City County resident, except for a small amount of time that they lived in an apartment in my grandparents' basement when they were first married. And they've raised all three of their sons here and they're all, their sons are all James City County residents too. And there's not a lot of people that you can say that about. So I'll miss my uncle. And I appreciate he watched our, watched our meetings and was never shy about what his opinion was about things that were going on. And Mr. Hippel can verify that a hundred percent. So, thank you.
That's true.
Mr. Hippel, if I could just jump in, I was looking for my piece of paper.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're good, you're good. Well, first of all, my sympathies to you and your family.
Thank you.
And your loss. I know that was, that was very difficult for your aunt and we all been thinking about you. And a happy belated birthday to Ms. Larson.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, we keep track of those, we do. I just want to let you know that I did participate in the most recent EDA meeting and also the AFD committee, committee participated in that. There will be a new application coming forward for consideration in the near future. So glad to see those to continue in the county because I think it's a worthwhile project. And glad that we're able to utilize those efforts for helping out those landowners that have those large parcels, especially up our way. So, thank you.
All right, county administrator and I went to mayors and chairs yesterday. Wasn't it? Quick. And our, our next one, we got a lot, we got a lot accomplished. It was in Yorktown and very, very well attended. And our next one will be here in James City County on January, I think, twenty-ninth or something, somewhere around there. So whoever's chair next year, I already told them that we're going to have a heck of an event. John and I, we had a good time in Kelray. What a great family they are up there and all the work they do and support the county. And, you know, it's, it's, it's another one of those things as gems that we have in the community that, you know, do their job, do what they need to, enjoy what they're doing, promote the county, promote good living and all that and, and work themselves to the bone. I mean, they work out there at that farm. If you ever get a chance to go out there and they, they would love to have any volunteer work for them. So get a chance, it'd be a great place to go and, and wonderful group. So next I'll turn it over to county administrator and look to you for.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, two quick items. One, I've mentioned before, our Halloween with Heroes is Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, so tomorrow. From six to eight P M. At the L E C, children and adults alike are encouraged to attend, but it's a fun, safe trick or treating event and get to meet a lot of our first responders and see a lot of our equipment and tools. So really, that's been very popular. It's forty-six hundred opportunity way. Again, October twenty-fifth, six to eight P M. And then we are hosting another, our Clean County Commission is hosting another repair fair and recycling expo. It's November eighteenth, which is a Saturday from nine A M. To one P M. At Warhol High School. You can bring things to drop off for recycling. You can bring, register and have items fixed. And if you want something registered to be fixed, it's, you do that on our website at jamescitycountyva.gov. So we'll talk more about that in the coming meetings, but that's coming in November as well.
All right, next we'll move into, I'll need a motion when we move into a closed session. Consulting with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specified legal matters required for the provision of legal advice by such counsel specified regarding a proposed under the Virginia Public Security Act in pursuit of section two point two dash three seven one one A eight of the Code of Virginia. And discussion or consideration of acquisition of real estate property for the public purpose or of the disposal of public held real estate property where discussion open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of a public body in pursuit of section two point two dash three seven one one A three of the Code of Virginia and regarding one eleven Grove Heights. of the Code of Virginia and regarding one eleven Grove Height Avenue and one oh nine Grove Height Avenue. In consideration of personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant of section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia, appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeal, appointments to the Colonial Juvenile Service Commission, appointments to Social Service Advisory Board, and appointments to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board. Have a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Hold call please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Sishtown? Mr. Eisenhour? Sorry about that, Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're in closed session.
Come out of closed session and need a certification?
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about the others items we indicated we would speak about in going into closed session.
Thanks, sir. Roll call, please. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Action's taken.
Okay, I have motions for appointments. The first is to appoint Andrew Frank to the James City County Board of Zoning Appeals for the balance of its five-year term that ends on March 31st, 2024. So, for the Colonial Juvenile Services Commission appointments, Ms. Melinda Marriott and Ms. Denise Kirschbaum for a length of term that through June 30th, 2027, for the Social Services Advisory Board. We would be appointing Mr. Frank Ferguson to assume the unexpired term of Mr. Wells that expires on November 30th, 2025. And we would be appointing Ms. Kenya Williams and Ms. Sharbella West for terms that expire on October 24th, 2027. And we would be, I think this is one where we make a recommend, is this, do we make a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. A recommendation to appoint the Honorable Judge Josh DeFord and Mr. Brad Reinheimer to three-year terms expiring to October 24th, 2026.
Right. Motion on the floor for the four appointment or for four boards' appointments for multiple people. Roll call, please. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now before we, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it, the boards for next regular meeting will be November 14th at 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. But we're gonna tend to this meeting until 9:00 a.m. on November 12th, where our four board members will be attending the VACO Annual Conference at the Homestead Resort in Hot Springs, Virginia. So do I have a motion to keep that open and this meeting open for that?
Motion.
Motion? Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting stays on.
Thank you.